Okay, I got seven o'clock, so call the meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Counselor Stenit? Youth representative? Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Fleck? She's frozen. Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Counselor Irvin? Mayor Galloway?
Here. So there's no items to be added to the agenda, and we had nobody sign up to speak for appearances of interested citizens for items not on the agenda, and there's nobody in the room. So we will move on to item five, public hearings. Item five A, this evening, we have a public hearing on an ordinance amending the Cottage Grove Development Code Title 14, 14.24.120 and 14.25.120, setback yards. City Council will make a final decision upon the ordinance based on the complete recording record, including planning commission's recommendation and testimony received tonight's public hearing. These proceedings are being held virtually and will be recorded. For anybody wishing to speak, if you are accessing the meeting through video, please raise your hand, and you will be recognized. If you're accessing the meeting using only audio, please announce that you would like to speak when called upon to speak. You must be recognized by the chair. You must state your name and address for public record. We ask each speaker limit themselves to no more than three minutes. Please remember that all presentations will be timed. You will be informed when your allotted time is expired. All speakers exceeding the time limit will be asked by the chair to immediately conclude their remarks. If you do not finish your presentation, be sure to provide a copy of your statement to staff. Written testimony may also be offered and will be considered and be made part of the record. In order to minimize repetitive testimonies, organizations are encouraged to have only one person speak for the group. Each person may testify only once unless called upon at the request of council members to respond to the question. Thank you for your cooperation. Before we begin, does any counselor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in the matter? Seeing none, I will open the hearing. We'll now have, we'll now have a public hearing and ordinance amending Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title 14 Development Code Housing Code amendments. May we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and counselors. So the purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed amendment of the, of the City of Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title 14 Development Code to remove parking areas from the setback yards applicability subsection in the industrial and the parks recreational recreation districts. The planning commission has held a public hearing on April 21st, 2021, and has recommended approval to the council. Before we take any comments, I'd like to also point out that it was brought to our attention today by legal counsel that in the ordinance that's prepared for your consideration under section 5B, you scroll down about two-thirds of the, of the paragraph and the sentence that reads, "In granting a conditional use permit or master plan, the planning commission may increase the standard yards if necessary to meet the criteria in chapter 4.4." That is an error. It should be 14.44, and I'll point that out again when, when this is under consideration. Because of the error, we'll be just asking for the first vote this evening, and we will have a second vote at the next council meeting. So with that, if there's any questions, it's appropriate for the council to hold a public hearing.
Anybody have question, any counselors have questions for staff? Seeing none, is there anybody from the audience that wishes to comment on this? Seeing none, I will close the hearing. Okay, item B, 5B is public hearing. This evening, we have a public hearing on ordinance amending Cottage Grove Development Code Title 14 Household Living and On-Site Accessory Use. City Council will make a final decision upon the ordinance based upon complete record, including planning commission recommendation and testimony received at tonight's public hearing. These proceedings will be held virtually and will be recorded. For anybody wishing to speak, if you're accessing the meeting using video, please raise your hand, and you will be recognized. If you're accessing the meeting using only audio, please announce you would like to speak when, when called upon to speak. You must be recognized by the chair. You must state your name and address for public record. We ask each speaker limit themselves to no more than three minutes. Please remember, all presentations will be timed. You will be informed when your allotted time is expired. All speakers exceeding the time limit will be asked by the chair to immediately conclude his or hers remarks. If you do not finish your presentation, be sure to provide a copy of your statement to staff. Written testimony may also be offered and will be considered to make part of any record. In order to minimize repetitive testimony, organizations are encouraged to have only one person speak for the group. Each person may testify only once unless called upon at the request of council members to respond to a question. Thank you for your cooperation. Before we begin, does any counselor wish to declare an actual or potential conflict of interest in this matter? Seeing none, I will open the hearing. I will now open the public hearing ordinance amending Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title 14 Development Code Housing Code amendments. May we please have the staff report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the purpose of this public hearing is to receive comments on the proposed amendment of the City of Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title 14 Development Code to include onsite management offices as examples of a tip, as, as examples of a typical accessory use for apartment complexes to facilitate the development of the multifamily apartment complexes in Cottage Grove. The planning commission held a public hearing on April 21st, 2021, and recommends approval to the council. It is now appropriate for the council to hold a public hearing on this ordinance.
Do any counselors have questions for staff? Seeing none, does anyone from the audience wish to comment on this, give a testimony? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing. Brings us to item six, consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second. Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Item seven, resolution and ordinance. Item A, first vote for ordinance amending Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title 14 Development Code. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the council has held a public hearing on the proposed amendment of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title 14 Development Code to remove parking areas from the setback yards applicability subsection in the industrial and the parks and recreation districts. The planning commission has held a public hearing on the attached ordinance on April 21st, 2021, and recommends approval to the council. It is now appropriate for the council to consider the ordinance, and as I stated during the public hearing, there's a, an error on the second page of the ordinance under section 5B. Instead of reading chapter 4.4, it should read 14.44. And with that correction, staff is recommending this evening to hold the first vote, and there'll be a second vote on this item because of the notice change to the ordinance at the next June 14th meeting.
Do we have an ordinance number?
3141.
Mr. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move that we adopt ordinance 3149, 41, amending title code 14 of the Development Code 14.24.120 and 14.25.120 setback yards.
Second. We have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Counselor Stenit?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Solzby?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Mayor Galloway?
Aye. Okay, so ordinance, well, we will fully adopt it at the next meeting. Item B, first vote for ordinance amending Cottage Grove Municipal Code Title 14 Development Code Housing Living On-Site Accessory Use. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, council has held a public hearing on the proposed amendment of the Cottage Grove Municipal Code Chapter 14 Development Code to include onsite management offices as an example of a typical accessory use for apartment complexes to facilitate the development of the multifamily apartment complexes in Cottage Grove. The planning commission held a public hearing on the attached ordinance on April 21st, 2021, and recommends approval to the council. It is now appropriate for the council to consider the ordinance, and this ordinance has been available for more than one week prior to the meeting, and staff is recommending adoption.
And this would be 3142? Mr. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Move that council adopt ordinance 3142.
Second.
Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Roberts?
Aye.
Counselor Stenit?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Solzby?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Mayor Galloway?
Aye. Ordinance 3142 is adopted. Brings us to item A. This is from the city council. Item A is audit committee recruitment, Miss Lykins.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The audit committee is comprised of two city councilors and three citizens, and we'll begin our audit for 2021 here in September, and hopefully the committee will be getting together in January of 2022. There will be one vacant citizen member position with the term of Jennifer Morocco expiring on July 31st of 2021. The deadline for submitting applications for the position is 5:00 PM on Friday, June 25th, and the appointment will hopefully be placed on the city council agenda for Monday, July 12th. And it's staff recommendation that the city council appoint a three-member council subcommittee to review and consider all the applications received and interview the applicants.
Does anybody want to be on the audit committee? Mr. Fleck? Mr. Irvin?
Does this cycle too? Does it, I was on the audit, did we say recycling?
It's for picking the audit, the citizens, the, it's interviewing.
Oh, okay. I see. Sorry, Mr. Irvin. I'm available if needed.
Okay, so Mr. Fleck, Mr. Irvin, Mr. Roberts, sound good? Does that work for you, Miss Lykins?
Thank you very much, yes.
Okay. Do you need a chair?
That would be appropriate, yes.
Okay, Mr. Irvin? Chair? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Item B, National League of Cities Service Line Warranty Program. Mr. Myers? You're muted.
Unmuted earlier, and then I muted back up. We have a couple guests with us tonight. Where did they go? Steve is here. He's our account manager from HomeServe for the service line warranties program, and Michael's also here too, I believe, from the program, just to answer any questions. We had the comments made at the previous council meeting regarding the program, so we kind of give you, gave you some answers and pulled some information together. We'll share a screen here, and basically, there's been 212 claims or services that were completed since February 2012, and this goes through March, I believe. So those that happened in April and May, which I know there was one in May, at least one, have, will add to this number. And from my experience that I had in the early part of May, there's an additional probably about $3,000 on that 275,400 that has been saved for residents. And quite frankly, I have paid 5196 for five years, I believe, if not four or five years, and so that's a bargain to, for $3,000. Plus, there's been three other cleanings of the, the line as well, as we've built up to that. So the program basically takes care of the exterior lines from the outside of the home to the property line or to the main line, depending on, or the water meter or the cleanout that would be located at the property line, and, which would be the responsibility of the property owner. Many property owners don't know that, and so it's, it's kind of one of those things that this program helps educate that, educate the citizens about what is their responsibility and what things they do need to take care of as, as a, as a result of the system. The, some of the complaints we've had, and the one that was brought up before was the, the logo on the, on, our logo on the letterhead and on the envelope, and I shouldn't have gone out of screening, saving, sharing, because I wanted to show you. And there's a possibility we can take our logo off, and they've talked about that, but they'd also provided us a sample of what would be a mock-up of having both logos on. Having both logos may be very beneficial on the paperwork because there are other companies out there, just like we have the other companies that regularly call our cellphones and offer us and want us to renew our vehicle warranties, which we don't have, and this, and do that over and over again. Service line warranties is vetted by the National League of Cities. We've joined into that as a member of National League of Cities in 2012 and have continued to use that program, and having our logo on it will help definitively tell people that, hey, this is service line warranties. This is the one that is supported by the city and through National League of Cities. So I think it's kind of important to have both, so you can see that here, and that may help take some of that, that concern away that, that people have. Some of the other concerns that were expressed were, yeah, you shouldn't buy these kinds of warranty programs. You should just write a check when these things happen because it's small expenses. Well, I'm sorry, I'm in the middle of trying to pay for a wedding and another $3,000 charge right now this month just would not have gone well. So it's really nice to have this, this system, and I think a lot of people have used it. We've saved our citizens $275,000 by making this program available. I think it's a very worthwhile program, and it helps educate people on what their lines could be like. When people call in and ask us questions, we encourage them to think seriously about what their system is like. You know, do they have trees? Are their neighbors' lines failing? How long and how old are their systems? If they're a brand-new home, they may not need it. They, they may want to wait a while, and so they need to think seriously about it. It is voluntary, and it's, it's worthwhile that way. Had a gentleman on Beeper today who actually called in about the program and said, yeah, he hasn't had his system fail, but he's a member of this because he doesn't want the hassle when it happens, because it will be a hassle, and it always is. It was really nice, the first part of May, the line backed up. The most difficult part is we are in kind of a rural area, and they don't have a lot of people that are on the list to do the work. They have hired, they have local plumbers on, and whether they have the equipment or not, they need to do it, is, is one that you might have to wait a little while because they are busy right now. But they came, and within a day, they had the line opened up, and then the next week for me, I had a plumber show up, and he said, yeah, I think we're gonna, we're putting in a proposal. And then by the next morning, the next morning, we had people out there digging in our yard, and we didn't have to do anything. And by the end of the week, it was finished, and the dirt was back on there, grass was planted, and you can hardly tell that there was anything done in my yard now. And that was, that was a week and a half ago. So great, great program. I think it works really well, and it's, it's been beneficial for me, and I, hopefully, it's been beneficial for the other two, $275,000 worth of people that have used it. So we have this on there for your discussion. If there's anything you want us to do, if you like the mock-ups of the two logos, we'll go ahead and instruct them to, to do that for us, and if you have any questions, we have Steve and Michael on that could answer.
Mr. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to state that I have any issue with the, the program. It sounds like it works well, and it serves those who sign up for it well. I will say that I was really caught off guard when I first moved here, and I saw the logo on there, because I, it really was misleading when it was simply the, the city's logo, and that struck me as odd, that, you know, and it made me wonder what the arrangement was there. And I know you didn't speak to it this time, but in the past, you've spoken to, there was a, we opted out of getting a kickback from the citizens in this town. However, it's still, there's still something interesting to me about the, the relationship, because I don't know of any other insurance program that, that we push so hard, and I wonder if League of Oregon Cities has other arrangements with other insurances, or what's unique about, about this one? Because there's plenty of insurances, you know, that's the idea, that you pay a little now, and if something goes wrong, you're covered for a much greater expense. So, I mean, I'm, right now, I'm, I would rather not see the logo on it. I don't have a problem with, because it's such an unknown thing, maybe, you know, having an endorsement of it, continuing the practice of telling people and informing them of, you know, and whether it be in the water bill, about this is something you need to pay attention to. And, and then, you know, like a lead program, like, hey, just go ahead, you know, here's a, a program that's vetted by the, by the city and League of Oregon Cities, but the special relationship to me doesn't, it doesn't sit well with me.
Yeah, and I think one of the reasons why there's that, that relationship, and why the National League of Cities, well, there's two reasons, why the National League of Cities put this as one of their packages, we have a, that, and, and that we participate in. They have a couple other warranty programs, some internal plumbing, and some other warranties for, in, in home things. The council back in 2012 said, no, we're just going to do that external portion of the line from the house to the main line or to the, the cleanout or to the meter. And the reason I think there's a connection between us is, number one, there are some programs out there that do have a number of exemptions that knock people out and are, are not good practices. I mean, this is a good practice. National League of Cities vetted it and made sure that this is one that is not going to rip people off and, and make it really difficult for you to make the claim and, and get serviced in. The other thing is, it does tie directly into our water lines or our sewer lines, and there is that connection where, when there's a problem, we always hear from the plumbers. If somebody's got a line backed up, they call us first, and they'll say, my sewer line's backed up. You need to come out and fix it. And we'll ask if they've got a plumber, you know, have, is anybody else in the neighborhood? Has somebody checked this? Is it your line or is it ours? And they often don't think of a separation. Once it leaves their house, they flush the toilet, it's our line. And I think that's the connection and why there's, we're in this. We aren't in car insurance, we aren't in the gas line, we aren't in any of those other functions, just because we don't provide those, but this one, it does tie into our system. And I think that's one of the reasons why it's been so important for us to be connected. They do provide, and if you look on the bill, they do provide good information on, here's what is needed, or what is a requirement, or what is a part of your responsibilities for, as a homeowner, so that people can understand that a little bit better. Does that, hopefully that answers a little bit and helps provide some of that.
Mr. Fleck?
Yeah, I, I'll agree with Counselor Irvin. I've had heartburn over our logo for a number of years, although I absolutely support the program. I think it's been a, a huge benefit to our citizens, and I was, I was actually trying to think of other insurance that I would, I would think the city would be involved in, and I think the, the nexus richer, or our city manager made, you know, that it connects to our system, and therefore, we're often dealing with folks makes sense. I guess I would, I, to be fair, I do agree with Counselor Irvin that if there was some other product that benefited our folks that was also vetted by, you know, National League or, or the, you know, Oregon League, I guess, you know, consideration of those would be something, you know, I think would be, you know, appropriate, but, but I, I am supportive. I do, I think that there's enough distinction between what's being proposed, you know, with their logo and then ours. I think it's pretty clear that us supporting it, not us doing it, and so I, I guess I'm okay with that.
What I like about having the logo on there is if somebody asks me, and I can, I can tell them, if, if our logo's on it, then we know it's a good, a good policy to get, but if it's not on there, then you're kind of on your own, because we don't know what that agency's providing. So when you, when you have one that, that we can, in good, good confidence recommend that somebody wants, you know, it's worth buying, and, you know, I had a total sewer failure, and it was $30,000, so I wished I would have had this, and it, it wouldn't have covered the whole thing, but it sure would have helped, because that was, that was an impact. Ms. Savage?
Thank you. I think this program absolutely sounds vital. I don't think that that's in question at all. I think we're all saying the same thing. It, it really sounds wonderful. You provide a great service. The heartache that I have is echoed around the room in the sense that when I received my first letter eight years ago when we moved here, I was turned off by the fact that the city's logo was on the letter, but it's not from the city. That, to me, was a red flag, and I stopped right there and didn't go any further because that, to me, was a red flag. I did not find that it was being endorsed. I found like it was being stolen and, and just snatched. I would feel more comfortable if, if there was, you know, if we're going to use both logos, if there was something saying, as endorsed by the city of Cottage Grove, and having a smaller logo. So it's clearly not our logo being front and center in the upper left-hand corner. I like the other logo being there, but I really want it to be clear that this is, you know, I don't want to see the two next to each other. I'd rather see as in, you know, endorsed by the city of Cottage Grove, or even that verbiage there, and maybe I missed that in the letter, but I was so turned off when I got mine that I didn't even go any further, and that was my personal experience. And I'm sad, because I actually really like this program and want to look into it, so thank you for bringing it back to my attention.
So what do we want to do?
Well, I will work with Steve and Michael and see if we can put more emphasis on the, the sentence that talks about Cottage Grove is partnered, and work on the logo a little bit, and we'll move forward with the two logos and maybe make ours a little smaller and say partnering with, or something like that, or endorsed by.
Okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, item C, concerns of council. Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Richard, what's the latest on the upcoming two streeteries and parklets for Axon Fiddle and Bartalodis?
Well, since Fay has raised his hand, he wants to answer, so I know they're, they're in the process with the Axon Fiddle one, and that one's moving forward. We had to get parts and order stuff. Things are really hard to get lately. I mean, even the funniest things are just difficult to get, but Fay?
Yeah, so I've been tracking the, the process. They're currently fabricating the one that goes next to the Axon Fiddle. They're very close. They're finishing the handrails on that parklet, and as soon as that's done, they can, they can get it installed. The, the issue or the, was dragging on is, as city manager said, acquiring- The, the issue or the, was dragging on is, as city manager said, acquiring product has been a challenge. But the other piece is, is that we've also split our crew up to spend time at the armory to get the, the front entryway completed. We have folks wanting to use it. The chamber is going to use the armory, I believe, on the fifth. And we have bookings that are started later in June and we're trying to get the armory usable. So we're moving both together at the same time. So hopefully the, the parklet for Axon Fiddle can be installed in the next couple of weeks. And then we'll get diligently working on that one for Bartalloyes. I've shared with Ryan Sisson, who communicated to the, to the restaurant owner that we will do everything we can to have it installed, the last one installed by the end of June.
Thank you, gentlemen. And Richard, are we still going to do these water tours?
Yes, and we're planning on getting those started after July. We're, we need to schedule, work with staff and figure out when we can schedule those and put those together. We're kind of short-staffed right now at the water plant. And so we, we want to see if we can get that freed up a little bit, but we're looking at July is when we'd get started.
All right. And my sources have told me we lost two more Tahos. Is that true? Just one more? Okay, that should be better. So we have two of them out? Just want to make sure you have what you need, you know? That's one of my concerns. As the community grows, we might have to look into that in the future. Because I know these Tahos have been, I talked to Mr. Smith out at the shop when I was dropping off some fencing for the mural and he said that the Tahos are very prone to problems. So, and I know you know that, so I'm just wanting to make sure that our police department has what it needs. I hate to see, because I heard one, the one went out on a call. And I, you know, and that's, that's not, you know, you guys deserve better. So.
We did have a, an incident with a battery in one of the Tahos. And maybe that's the second one that Mr. Smith is talking about. We actually had a battery that exploded while two of the officers were going to a call. I don't know what that damage is yet. My initial information is that it's just replacing the battery and making sure that we clean up all of the acid and stuff. Nobody was hurt. It was a very loud, almost explosion underneath the hood, made it rattle. It did not cause any damage to the, the outside or anything. And fortunately, nobody was hurt. But that takes a little bit of special cleanup to make sure that nobody gets burnt cleaning up all of the acid and stuff. I haven't heard when that will be back in service, but I'm sure that it will be. That cleanup and then replacing the battery.
Thank you for the question.
You do have one of the new Fords online and you've got another one still getting outfitted?
Yes, we have, we had the, the doors for the two lease return Fords painted so they match our color scheme. And those are ready to go. The city staff, Mr. Smith put logos and stuff on them. We're waiting for two radios to be delivered, to be installed in that. One of the radios will be taken out of the, the vehicle that had the transmission issues and be transferred right away. And then the second radio will go into the second Ford SUV. And then one of the older radios will go into my police car because I still have the Kenwood, so I only have portable radio function.
How many working models do we have now that are actually?
Working cars?
Yeah, working cars that are on the road patrolling.
Seven.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you, Scott.
Excuse me. And that would be seven Tahos and Tahos or Fords. And then we'd still have the Crown Victoria that the school resource officer is driving back.
I actually saw a Crown Vic on the road today. It's a little unusual to see the Crown Vic out there, but it's good.
It won't be here long, but we need to limp it along until we can get through the fiscal year and go into the next.
All right. And the last thing I have to say is the mural project's moving along great. Phase one is complete. I want to thank Fay Stewart for coming out, helping me with the electrical problem I was having with the festival box on the back of the old hotspot building. Everything's working great. Got the lift up and running. Phase one is done, which is the peeling of all the old paint. We'll be starting phase two as soon as we get through this wet spot. It's supposed to get real warm this coming weekend. And we'll be reinforcing and putting in new mortar where needed. And then the primer will go on and then the artist can start the actual painting of, of the mural. So that's what I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Ms. Irvin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to just give a report from the Lane County Workforce Board. That was the, the first one I've attended. And it was a lot of updates to bylaws and proving changes and just kind of general business. But one thing that I was able to learn about was that some of the work, I think it's displacement programs are, that are part of Lane County Workforce and one of the programs they fund. And asked about, you know, at the end of the day, what, what are the trainings that are happening for displaced workers and what, what, what alternative trainings do they have? And it was basically welders, welding, driving schools, some healthcare training, some food service. But those were the only sectors that were listed. And it sounded like they were always open to lurk here for more businesses. I wanted more representation from the Cottage Grove area in that. So I'm happy to be a contact if anybody has a business that wants to be involved in being part of that program where they help train displaced workers. Also Cindy Perry with the Lane Workforce Partnership is a lead contact. And I believe the Lane Workforce Partnership has a website and her contact, at least the phone number, is, is listed on there. So that will, those meetings will continue. They're fairly sporadic, but eager to learn more about what, what we can do down here in partnership with them. And then there was a, an item brought up at, on the radio call that we did with Mayor. And there's the, some spouting water coming right across from Bear Iron off of 10th by, in Bohemia Park. And was out on a lock last night and noticed it as well. It's been going on for quite a while, but it kind of intermittently spouts out pretty close, just south, I think of the new concrete sidewalk. But other than that, a walk around town yesterday was really nice. It was really encouraging to see, there's a lot of home improvement going on, a lot of cleanups going on, a lot of people out working and making, making things nice. And all that fourth street area by Lincoln looks great. I just, you know, took a moment to appreciate the lack of power lines. That really does make a difference. So yeah, just keep up the good work, Cottage Grove.
Mr. Stewart, you want to comment on that part?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Councilor Irvin, I appreciate the notice regarding the sprinklers. We're experiencing a couple valves that are starting to fail. I think they're not sealing, seating property, so it allows a little pressure to go through. When enough pressure builds up, you'll see the sprinkler kind of shoot a little bit of water sporadically. We're in a process of trying to get parts and get those fixed, but appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Anyone else got a concern? Ms. Savage?
I want to reiterate again, conversations about this fence line that some folks continue to contact me about. Since the last meeting, I was contacted again. And I feel like there was some really amazing work that was done and really troubleshooting to work with the, the property owner, trying to make and go above and beyond really what is required of the city. And I just thought it was incredible to communicate with both Greg Griswold as well as Fay Stewart. And I, I hear that Richard Myers got pulled into this. So thank you, all of you, for all of your hard work on this and really appreciate it. I think it's beginning to look really nice back there. The streets, the alleyways look really good. So I really, I want to reiterate my thanks for that. I was walking on Main Street the other day and had trouble in leaving the chamber and walking across Highway 99 to Covered Bridge Brewing. I was getting a cup of coffee and the, the light wasn't working for a pedestrian. I pushed the light and it just never went. And I stood there and I stood there. I went two days later and it was working. So I don't know if that's something that's kind of periodically going out or maybe it was addressed. I don't know. But that was being a little wonky. I thought that was kind of interesting. Other than that, I think you guys are fabulous. Thank you.
Ms. Irvin?
Thanks again. Sorry for going twice, but that just jogged my memory. We, we walked up Mount David and then came down the, by the McFarland Cemetery and just noticed, and this might be a historical society thing, the sign in the cemetery gives one date when it was established and then the informational sign down the stairs gives a different date. So, I want to look at that.
Yeah, that is a historical society and the cemetery group. But yeah, we'll point it out to Lloyd and he'll, he'll research it and figure it out.
I just got the, next week I'll be on a meeting with the Oregon Transportation Commission Chair, Chair Van Brocklin for a meeting from the Lane Act that I'm on. And so hopefully learn something new out of that meeting and something good comes out of it. Mr. Fleck?
So I apologize, you just jogged my memory. So I, we have got an email from Brenda at ElCog about Lane County tomorrow. Are you, is that in your manager's report there, Richard?
Yeah, but go ahead.
No, 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 I'll let you do it. I just wanted to make sure we touched faces on that. Thank you.
Okay, so that'll bring us right into city manager report.
Just a few items. First off, a while back, Damian Sherwood from the Sentinel had talked to council members about doing a guest viewpoint, a little article in the newspaper on a regular basis. And then everybody was gung ho for it. Yeah, it's a great idea. Nothing happened. He didn't get any articles. And so he and I visited a little bit and I suggested that we set a deadline and have an assignment that, hey, here's the first deadline, this is who's doing it and, and move that way. We're all busy and, oh, somebody else will do it. And this way you'll have a date. He'd like to do it so that it'd be in, the deadline would be the first Monday of each month. That way we could write something about maybe what's coming up in the council meetings, the second and the fourth Mondays or, or something along that line. So the first deadline would be June 7th and, and that would be in the June 10th an issue. And any volunteers or anybody who wants to take that on as the first inaugural guest viewpoint for regular council or city viewpoints in the paper. See, Councilor Fleck. Do we want to go ahead and set out assignments for the rest of the year? That would be seven. By the way, it just works out that there's seven months left in the year till, until December. And make those assignments now so we can continue to remind you. And you can start thinking about it. So whoever has July can start thinking now and, and be ready for July and August and September and all those months. Do you want to do that or do you want to have us send something out later?
I'll take July because I'll have a little downtime before that.
Okay. August, anyone? Irvin? Okay. September?
Irvin.
Uh, Councilor Irvin. Was that Councilor Irvin for August? Yeah. Councilor Stenit, which you want, September?
I'll do December.
October and November, anyone?
I can do October.
Okay.
Ms. Soulsby, you okay with November?
My internet went down and so I did not hear what was going on on that part. I just got back on.
You've got a November readiness.
For the guest viewpoint for the Sentinel in November?
What day? November?
It's the first, yeah, November. It'd be the first Monday in November, they'd have to be turned in. So the first Monday of every month, turn that in.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, the links would be 500 to 600 words. If you really got verbose and needed more, they might be able to work something out. But generally shooting for the 500 to 600, keep it broad and, you know, share issues of, that you think may come up. Or you can express your appreciation for things that are going on in the community or, you know, keep, keep it wide open. Think of different things you could put in there. And so we'll put those out and thank you. That takes care of that. The, I mean, if you remember a couple of years ago, we had, we supported Springfield in their application for a raise grant or build, kind of a build grant is what it was. They changed the name for Franklin Avenue. They didn't get it. They had high scores, it sounds like what we had, but they did not get it. And so they're reapplying and basically for the same project, they have adjusted some things and done some things that were suggested from the application. They're hoping that there's actually more funding there this time around and that they may get funding for that. That would be for the Franklin Boulevard improvements there in Springfield. Their question is, are we okay with our logo or our signature going back on that as a support for them on that grant with the Department of Transportation? I don't think it takes any official action. If nobody has any objections, then we'll go ahead and say yes, go ahead and put us on there then. Cool. Just wanted to let you know that. We have with us tonight, MJ is on as our youth rep. And this is her last council meeting with us as the youth advisory council representative. She is leaving in early June, I think, what, did you say the 14th, MJ? She might be unable to hear us. But in early June, she's leaving to go to school at Cornell. So they have classes that'll take off during the summer. And so she's excited by that. Along with that, for your information, on Wednesday is scholarship night for the high school. And it is virtual, so we have the link and you can go on and, and watch that. We have some Yak members that are graduating, that are receiving the Pat Patterson Scholarship. And so if you're interested for that, be a part of that. I can tell you MJ and Courtney are two graduates this year and it's, we're going to miss them dearly. They were great to have on, on the Yak and did a lot of stuff for us and they are both getting a scholarship. So, so we're excited by that. The proposed county ordinance, we got this notice as Councilor Fleck was pointing out. The Lane County Board of Commissioners tomorrow is going to be considering an ordinance that would require all local public bodies who put a fee or a tax on, and the county has to collect it for them, that they will be charging a fee to us or to the local jurisdiction for any costs associated with the collection of that, excluding ad valorem taxes, meaning excluding your, your property taxes. So they won't, they tried to do property taxes once before, but the state said, uh-uh, you can't do that because that is your responsibility and you get funding to do that. And so this would be for other fees and, or taxes that we collect. So they're having that public hearing tomorrow, 9:00 AM. It's a remote meeting, so people, if you wanted to listen to that or, or hear what's going on, that's happening tomorrow. I don't know if there's anything we want to say or do specifically, this would apply to us. I think there's, and Brenda says that it's probably in response to Eugene's public safety payroll tax that Eugene's talking about and putting on so that it would make sure that that revenue that they're generating there, that the county isn't collecting it and having to go through all that and not having any compensation for the work that they do to collect that. Any thoughts?
Mr. Irvin?
Mr. Mayor, do, I mean, do you have any sense of how common this is or? Mr. Mayor, do, I mean, do you have any sense of how common this is or for a county to charge? I mean, it makes sense if there's work involved, but I thought that kind of was their function in, in large part. I guess I'm unclear as to what, what the proposal might be, if it's really burdensome, if it siphons off a whole bunch, or if it's really based on the work that goes in and it frees them up to do other stuff. What's your sense?
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know. And Brenda goes on and talks about there's other agencies that would incur a cost. I mean, if the Eugene payroll tax, for example, the other governmental agencies would have to be doing and spending some money to go through the process of collecting that tax on their payroll and remitting it to wherever it goes. So I don't, I don't know. I don't know how broad this is. Yeah, we got this just right about at five tonight. So I'm not sure how, how common it is among other counties and, and what the impact would truly be. And if it's for stuff they actually collect for them and do, or if it's broader in the sense that if they're collecting that tax on their own payroll and having to go through that, that they are going to collect money to, to cover those costs.
Mr. Fleck?
Richard, what about the, the tobacco, was it registration or tax or whatever that is? You know, I guess I'm just starting to think there are lots of things they've advocated for. And if they turn around and then start taxing us or charging us, I, I don't know. I'm with you. I'm not sure how I feel about this. But it, once again, like you said, it caught me off guard at the end of the day reading that, so.
Yeah. The tobacco licensing registration that we have, we collect that and we completely do all of that. So, but if it went into something more extensive, transient room tax might be a good example. Currently, county doesn't do it. Eugene does it. But it's through an agreement with all the, the cities and we have a percentage that they get of, to do that process, to do the administrative work. So I guess it's not that uncommon. I mean, with our gasoline tax, ODOT, we have them collect it and they take a ridiculously small percentage, which is kind of uncharacteristic for ODOT. But I didn't say that out loud, I hope. But, you know, it, they do a, it a great job and it's really, really reasonable. We could not do it for the, the price that, that ODOT collects us for. So those are all agreements though, that are individually worked out as we do that. So I don't, I don't know if there's, to me, it almost seems like there's not a need for this because you work out an agreement if you're going to have somebody else collect it for you. But maybe it's one of those things that you don't have anybody else and the county is supposed to do it. I don't know. It'd be something to listen to and find out what they're really doing. I think Bert has a comment, a question.
I just agree with Richard. I believe that it's best to have that negotiation between the two entities. We chose the city of Eugene for our transient room tax and they charge us like $129 a month. All of our other taxes come either from the state directly, for liquor tax, cigarette tax, those sorts of things. So I was just, my initial blush was why aren't we just going to negotiate with county if we need them to collect something for us?
Yeah. So we'll keep an eye on it. If any of you want to watch that, it's tomorrow at nine on, at Lane County. And so you can watch that on their, their YouTube channel and, or participate. I don't know if you can participate in the meeting there or if they have another link to do that. But we'll be kind of keeping an eye on that too. Just one last item is Monday is Memorial Day and we are working on having a memorial ceremony, Memorial Day ceremony here at City Hall like we did last year. Hopefully it's the last one that will be a virtual one, but we may broadcast the future ones on YouTube. We will be definitely streaming it live on YouTube. Right now we may have a difficulty in putting it on Channel 144 live because the person who is the primary person responsible for doing that with the school district in South, South Lane TV, his wife is having a baby and is expecting it on Monday, Memorial Day. So he may be disposed. We may be able to work out a way that I can do it or something, but I'm not sure if I want to learn how to put things on South Lane TV in addition to trying to stream it. So it may be just scheduled to be done at a different time on South Lane TV, but we will have it streamed live on YouTube. So watch for that 10, 11 o'clock on Monday on the city's YouTube channels. That's what I have.
All right. So we have no attorney and there's no items removed from the consent agenda. Brings us to item 12, executive session. City Council for Cottage Grove will now meet in executive session to consult with staff designated to negotiate real property transactions. Executive session is held in pursuit of ORS 192.660E, which allows the council to meet in executive session to deliberate with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Representatives of the news media and designated staff should be allowed to attend executive sessions. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive sessions, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we will adjourn the meeting. Ms. Lichten? Oh.
This is waving goodbye.
Are we clicking another link, Richard? Or can I get a minute to move into the bedroom?
Yeah, we could click and we have another link set up for the executive session, but we could just stay in this. Is it okay if we stay in now? Because this will be put on as a recording. So we need to go out. On your, on the webpage is the link for the executive session. If you'll leave this and go to that, and then we'll have that locked for just the executive session and then we'll end. We won't come back into review session.